I am excited to welcome you to the first meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Education for 2025. Let's rise now and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic, and the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so small.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda. So we will start with some board comments. If any of my colleagues have anything to report or comment on? Possibly not. Well, in that case, I will say what everybody else is thinking, and I know our hearts are so heavy with the events in Los Angeles County and the abject devastation and ruination. It's almost, well, it's apocalyptic in nature, and I know we all send our prayers to those people who lost their homes, family members, businesses, and all those students that don't have a school to go to either. It's just beyond our imagination, and this is where the value of community really shows up. And I remember Mr. Rogers would say that when he was little and there would be scary things happening, his mother would always say, "Look for the helpers. You will always find people who want to help." And I think that we're witnessing that right now as a response. I know from the funders community, I just came from a meeting, we're all talking about ways in which to help. And in our community, you know, we've seen, we've seen our share of natural disasters, and I think preparedness is like top of mind right now, in addition to just radical empathy for those who are suffering. What we know is, it's a long, long way back. One other thing I wanted to just remind everybody about or, or inform. There is a program called Vive el Arte de Santa Barbara that our students throughout Santa Barbara County have the distinct pleasure of, and their families, of the opportunity to witness cultural arts writ large. It's dance and music and, I mean, Grammy winning, Grammy winning award performances from carp to Nukuyama, and all of this is done through a partnership through La Vista PTA, Marjorie Luke Theater, Guadalupe Dunes, and the Arts and Lectures Division of UCSB. And I say all that to let you know that since 2006, this program's been floated by a few funders, and the work now is to expand it so there'll be even more culturally relevant opportunities for, for families in some communities where there really isn't another vehicle for arts education, to continue to expand. And there's an invitation. If any of this resonates with you and you're interested, there's going to be a luncheon at the Santa Barbara Club on Friday, January 24th at noon, and it's all about this program. So if you have interest, I know it's a long way to go for some of our North County friends, but let me know. La Santa Cecilia will be performing, and there'll be a whole lot of really rich and beautiful information about this really important program. So with that being said, we'll get back to our agenda if there's no other comments. And I don't believe we have any public comments today. I don't see any.
No public comments, but if we could put on the record a roll call, that would be great.
Oh, I skipped right over roll call. Let's go back to roll call. Anna.
Okay, Mrs. Alvarez Flores?
Here. Thank you. Can we roll back? Can we roll back to that very important piece? Thank you, Ms. Barnwell. There is live simultaneous Spanish interpretation of the board meeting available for those viewing online. You just need to select it. So thank you for that reminder, and now we will have roll call.
Okay, we just did Mrs. Alvarez Flores. We'll do Dr. Armistead.
Here.
Hey, Mrs. Cardy.
Here.
Ms. Irman.
Here.
Mrs. Frost.
Present.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
And Mr. Walker is absent today.
Okay, I think I was rushing because I'm excited about this next item on our agenda, which is the Santa Barbara County Education Office Overview. This is going to be extremely illuminating and helpful for our new members. The superintendent, associate superintendent, and director of communications will provide brief overviews of the office, following divisions or departments, Administrative Services Division, Communications Department, Curriculum and Instruction Division, Human Resources Division, Special Education Division, and Student and Community Services Division. Susan, do you want to introduce?
Would be delighted to. Thank you. I'm going to approach the podium to do so.
Good afternoon.
To our County Board of Education, and Happy New Year to all of you and to everyone here today. I'm delighted to, to see you all. Thank you so much for the time and the space for myself and our dynamic associate superintendents and incredible director of communications and public information officer to present to you today. Today's going to be about a snapshot, a snapshot of what our SB CEO programs and services are. And let me start by asking you to find your packet that you found on your places, at your places. There are packets here for the audience as well, and you have the presentation. And I think I've seen some of you go through some of the materials, but I will be asking for you to direct your attention to some of those items along the way, so I wanted to make sure that you had those. I'm going to begin today by giving some of the context before handing over the baton to the associate superintendents. And the context is really mostly about county offices and county boards. So county offices like SB CEO really have a unique vantage point and role. We are a liaison between the state and schools within each of our counties. And when I say state, the state in terms of, you know, from which we liaise can be many things. It can be the California Department of Education. It can be the governor's office and the divisions under the governor, and it can be the State Board of Education. So when we say we liaise between the state and schools, it can mean different things at different times. We are a hub. We are a hub that connects local, regional, and state efforts advocating for resources and policies and practices on behalf of students within Santa Barbara County. And we also create many programs and services. And in many, many cases, we do so on behalf of the state's system of support. And also, we operate our own schools as well. And so it is our purpose and mission to create vital connections that empower our community to realize the full potential of education, which means that as we connect students and educators and local school districts and charter schools to essential services, we also create, deliver, facilitate, host, and develop unique services, supports, programs, and networks, many of which you will hear about today. Our vision, we envision a future where every child has access to inspiring experiences and opportunities that meaningfully contribute to their education and well-being. And at SB CEO, we really pride ourselves in being value-driven. And, and I'm going to ask you to go, please, to your first handout. It was right after the slides, because I'm going to ask some of our board members to, to read for us some of the descriptions. So you'll see a double-sided handout. Perfect. As we serve in many different capacities and leverage the strength of many different disciplines here at SB CEO, we're guided by the same core values and principles across our organization. So I'm hoping that I, I'm going to start with Mrs. Flores today and start with "we are student-centered," because I think these value statements are very, very important as they ground us at SB CEO. So Mrs. Flores.
Sorry, I already forgot the first. Thank you. We, we work to ensure that all student has equitable access to education and opportunity. We work to ensure that all students feel valued as members of our school communities. Their diverse experiences, identities, abilities, and aspirations are seen as assets contributing to a vibrant learning culture.
Thank you so much. So we are student-centered. And Mrs. Reed, if I can ask you to go to the next value.
We are driven by purpose. We passionately believe in the transformative power of public education. We execute with excellence. Because of this belief, we are driven by our desire to make a difference.
Thank you so much. Ms. Irman, championing solutions.
There we go. Let's try this again. "We champion solutions. The work we do requires tenacity, imagination, and positivity. The challenges we face are complex. We meet those challenges by digging in, working together, and finding solutions. Wherever potential needs a champion, we step in to build bridges to possibilities."
Thank you so much. Dr. Armistead, the next one, please.
We lead by example. We share ownership of and responsibility for the service and leadership SB CEO provides. Our commitment to educational and fiscal integrity, accountability, and stability is evident in everything that we do.
And finally, in this case, Mrs. Frost, please.
We serve our community.
We value our role as trusted community leaders and collaborators. Our interactions are grounded in integrity, respect, and responsibility. We work to establish and strengthen partnerships throughout the county and respect the autonomy of local educational agencies and partners.
Thank you so much. So we've set some of the mission, the purpose, our vision, and our values at SB CEO. And now I'd like to move into how, how do we deliver on, on all of that? And while we work as a very collaborative team across SB CEO, we are organized primarily by five major divisions with associate superintendents as the leads of the divisions and underneath then programs and departments within those, within those divisions. So let me, let me bring this up here, just to make sure that you see our nomenclature. Divisions and then underneath are departments and programs. And before we begin actually with our division presentations, I want to zoom out once more and situate SB CEO within the context of California. So let me just do that briefly here. In the state of California, SB CEO is one of 58 county offices of education. And all of the county offices of education belong to an association called the California County Superintendent's Organization. They are divided into, or it is divided into 11 regions. And we, SB CEO, is in region eight, along with Kern County, San Luis Obispo, and Ventura Counties. And the association has standing statewide committees. All of our associate superintendents and many of our directors are part of those statewide committees and actually have chaired, recently chaired several of those committees as well. So we're very, very involved with this association. Of the 58 county superintendents, four are appointed by their county board of education, one by the board of supervisors, and then 53 county superintendents are elected countywide for four years. Here, and this is a handout that you have as well, you can see that SB CEO is in class three. So the counties are organized into classes based on average daily attendance. And within class three, SB CEO is actually the smallest within that based on ADA. You'll notice that Los Angeles is truly in a class of its own over 1 million students. It stands alone. 22% of the students of California all reside in Los Angeles County. Interestingly, there are seven single district counties that are both county offices and then also districts as well. The county board serves as a county board and then a district board as well. So you'll see them listed there on that slide. And now zooming in to Santa Barbara County. Here you see the color-coded relationship map, where districts are color-coded together to show the relationship between the feeder and partner school districts into the high school district. So you'll see that Lompoc, which is maroon or red, Cuayama, and kind of a navy, and Carpinteria to the southeast, they're really standalone districts where the elementary schools move into the same secondary schools and then high schools, so junior high. But then if you take an example like in the Teal, there are seven small school districts in the San Ynez Valley, and then they all feed into or partner into the San Ynez High School District. And that's why that map exists like it does. Here on the backside of one of the handouts that you have is a placemat of 20 school district superintendents and 10 charter school superintendents. Here, oops, let me go back one. Here I've put a little star next to Dr. Randy Haggard and Maureen Donner. These two superintendents have recently announced their retirement. So Dr. Haggard from Bulton will be retiring at the end of this school year, and Maureen Donner will, will retire at the end of this calendar year. And in terms of governance, here are just some of the differences between a district and county office board. District and charter school superintendents are appointed and hired by their school boards. District Board of Trustees are elected to four-year terms, similar to county board elections. They, they have local control, we call it, local control. And so they govern their own local school district, approve their local district budget. They select their district curricula and set their district board policies. On the other hand, county board of education trustees have very distinct and important roles, very different from a school board. That you have county board of education trustees, county board of education trustees have specific authority related to juvenile court and community schools. You approve of the county office budget. You set county board policies. You act as an appellate board for inter-district hearings and expulsion hearings. With your decision is the final decision in those cases. An important distinction is that county boards do not have authority over any county office employees, nor authority over any school districts, since districts are governed by local control. And with all of that as context and background, let's start in with our division overviews. Each division overview has been purposefully set to be pretty concise today, and we hope to come back at a future board meeting and expand on the programs and services within the division. So starting with Student and Community Service, I'd like to welcome to the podium Bridget Boblitz. Bridget, Bridget has served as associate superintendent here at SB CEO for six years. She started as a teacher at Cuayama School District and then taught at Los Olivos School District, becoming the principal at Los Olivos and then superintendent. I get to share a very fun fact about Bridget before she comes up here. Bridget loves to travel. She's traveled inside the USA, 16 states so far, and outside the United States, 11 countries. Here we go. Australia, Belize, Canada, Costa Rica, France, French Polynesia, Maria, Ireland, Italy, Jamaica, Mexico, and New Zealand. And a bonus fun fact is that she loves live concerts. First one started, first one she attended at age seven, Culture Club.
Oh, wow.
Yes, and just this past summer, attended nine concerts with her husband. If you'll please join me in welcoming Bridget Boblitz.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Salsito, for the warm introduction, and good afternoon, board members. For those of you I haven't met, it's a pleasure to meet you today. I am pleased to present an overview of the Student and Community Services Division. Our division is comprised of seven departments, including three nonprofit organizations, and it provides direct instruction to early care and education and our juvenile court and community schools. Additionally, we offer specialized services and programs designed to support students, families, and the community of Santa Barbara County. With a dedicated team of about 150 employees, the division's work is centered around three primary focus areas. Student and family support, career technical education, and health and safety. The division's largest department, the Early Care and Education, oversees $60 million in funding in subsidized childcare through the Alternative Payment Program. They operate 11 childcare centers, including nine California state preschools and two infant toddler centers, and administers the Childcare Food Program, all serving about an estimated 5,000 children annually. Additionally, it delivers professional development and training for our ECE and transitional kindergarten educators, and manages the Santa Barbara Childcare Planning Council and Quality Counts Initiative. The Juvenile Court and Community Schools Department delivers instruction for at-promise youth who have been adjudicated, expelled, or would benefit from a small alternative school setting. Dos Portes Court School, operating in conjunction with the Santa Barbara County Department, Probation Department, excuse me, currently serves 29 students, that's today's enrollment, while the Peter B. Fitzgerald Community School, operating under MOUs with the Santa Maria Benita and Santa Maria Joint Union High School Districts, serves 34 students. Enrollment in both schools fluctuates throughout the year, reflecting the dynamic nature of the populations we serve. The board has, as Susan said, jurisdiction and oversight over the juvenile court and community school programs, ensuring we meet the needs of the students we serve. Together, these schools create supportive environments tailored to the unique needs of our students, helping them achieve academic success and personal growth. Wrong button. There we go. Wrong green. The Career Technical Education Department supports middle and high school, schools by overseeing grant funding, offering professional learning and field experiences for teachers, and connecting schools with businesses and higher education to build career pathways. This year, CTE has scheduled 12 teacher tours throughout the county to strengthen connections between educators and local industries. Additionally, CTE operates an early care and education apprenticeship to address workforce demands. To date, we have one apprentice who has graduated, and nine are currently enrolled in the program. In 2324, 9,105 students in Santa Barbara County were identified as foster youth or experiencing homelessness. The Transitional Youth Services Department works to improve outcomes for these students by supporting our county schools with resources, training, and technical assistance. The program also fosters collaboration between schools and community organizations to ensure students and their families receive the support they need to thrive. Within the health and safety focus area, these three standalone programs provide vital services that support students, schools, and the broader community. The Behavioral Health and Wellness Program provides training, funding, and resources to schools to support the emotional and psychological well-being of students in our school communities. The School Climate and Student Engagement Program assists districts with attendance programs, expulsion hearings, appeal hearings, excuse me, the inter-district transfer appeal hearings, and develops the county-wide triennial Expelled Youth Plan and the SB CEO Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP. The board, as Susan mentioned, has jurisdiction over these appeal hearings and the approval of the Expelled Youth Plan and the SB CEO LCAP. This program also provides opioid overdose prevention resources, tobacco use prevention education, or TUPI, grant management, 504 plan resources for our internal programs and training. And our school safety liaison facilitates communication between law enforcement and schools during emergencies, provides professional development on school safety, oversees SB CEO's emergency preparedness, and supports the countywide implementation of the standard response protocols and the standard reunification method. These programs are integral to enhancing health, safety, and engagement across the county. And my last slide. Our division also administers three nonprofits to expand its reach and impact. The first one, Children's Creative Project, serves around 50,000 students annually, providing resident and touring artist programs for schools, and hosts the annual E. Muddinari Street Painting Festival. Children and Family Resource Services serves an estimated 15,000 children and families annually through its three programs. Health Linkages, which provides orthodontic services, oral health screenings, and preschool assessments. Mental Wellness Education and Linkages, also known as MWell, which connects students to behavioral health and wellness resources and services, and Connecting to Coverage, which helps families access health insurance. CFERS, as we call it, also coordinates community health projects with the Santa Barbara County Promotoras Network. In 2324, Partners in Education served 4,305 students and families by offering in-depth computer basics courses, tech support, and free computers, as well as an eight-week job readiness training program with career coaching for students. And additionally, Partners provides a paid student internship program that connects students with local employers. As you can see, our division, departments, programs, and services span from student and family support, that career technical education, health and safety, and community partnerships, and collectively impacts tens of thousands of students and families across Santa Barbara County each year, demonstrating our unwavering commitment to their success and well-being. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Bridget. I can see Kirsten Escobedo making her way right up to the podium. Kirsten has been with us at SB CEO for six years, six wonderful years. She has extensive experience in special education. First started as a para educator, special education teacher, program specialist, and then a director of special education at Santa Barbara Unified, and then Carpinteria Union School District. Some very fun facts about Kirsten Escobedo. She enjoys taking really long walks, which is lovely, reading, going to concerts. Her latest hobby, doing puzzles. She is a super fan of 80's hard rock music. And when I asked her some of her top favorites, she said, I had to look up how to say it, Queensryche, Lilac, and Van Halen. Everyone, Kirsten Escobedo.
Thank you, Dr. Salsito. Good afternoon, everyone, and I'm pleased to have a few minutes to share with you a little bit more about the Special Education Division here at SB CEO. I'm going to start with kind of the, the big picture and then drill down a little bit on each of our programs in the time that I have with you today. We provide services to students on behalf of school districts, and we do that in three main areas. Those three areas are early start, direct service districts. Early Start, Direct Service Districts, and the third area we call Regional Programs. The first area, Early Start, is we provide services to children ages zero to three in partnership with Tri-County's Regional Center. These are children with disabilities who are found eligible between those ages, and our focus in, in that program is children who are deaf or hard of hearing or visually impaired, although we do provide services to students who need speech and other services as well. That is funded through a grant, and we can serve up to 125 students countywide, and we do that on behalf of all districts throughout Santa Barbara County. The next type of service that we provide is what we call our Direct Service Districts, and right now we are serving three small districts throughout the county with, for a total of about 90 students among all three of those districts. And our, the special education staff are hired by SBCO, but they are based at those districts. They work alongside the general education staff there, serving the students and families in those three small school districts. And then finally, our third type of program is our, our, our regional programs, and I'm going to spend a little bit more time talking about those because that is the biggest program that we have, and by the end of the year, we serve close to 900 students in all of our regional programs. And that consists of our extensive support needs, which you might be familiar with as moderate to severe. That's an older term. We now use the term extensive support needs, low incidence disabilities, and special education preschool. So a little bit more about our regional programs. As I mentioned, extensive support needs is for students that have more significant disabilities, and these are often students who will be in special education up until the age of 22. Many of them need support with activities of daily living. Many have health needs that need to be supported throughout the school day, and some of them are non-ambulatory and non-verbal. Another type of regional program that we provide is a continuum of deaf education programs from ages zero to 22 in northern Santa Barbara County in both classrooms and also itinerant programs. So we oversee and run the classrooms for the deaf education programs that are in the classrooms, and the itinerant services are provided as push-in services to districts in North County. The same is true with our visually impaired services. We, we serve children who are partially sighted or blind in the northern part of the county, and also that, those are provided by push-in services to the districts. We also work in collaboration with Bridget's Division and provide these special education services at the Dos Puertos Court School. We have staff that are based there and serve students there. And then an additional program that we provide is occupational therapy to a small number of districts throughout the county, and that is an itinerant push-in service. And then our largest regional program is preschool. And you can see here that the preschool services are provided to the districts that are listed in that box there. And a note about that, we serve at the direction of requesting districts, and requests change from time to time. For example, we have served Lompoc Unified School Districts preschoolers with IEPs at their request for several decades, and that, and they will begin serving their preschools with IEPs July 1st of this year. So that's a, that's a change for our division. All right. A little bit more about preschool. This is, as I mentioned, our largest regional program, and, and something to note about preschool which is unique is that students can be found eligible all throughout the school year. We are obligated to, if a child is being served an early start, we are obligated to assess them to see if they're eligible for services when they turn three. And so obviously, children are not just turning three between August and June, right? It happens year-round. So our preschool programs start smaller and grow, and so that's why by the end of the year, we often have close to 900 students that we're serving. So two main types of programs with preschool, itinerant programs and preschool classrooms. Our itinerant services include speech, something called Preschool Plus, which is push-in service from a special education teacher or para educator. Sometimes that might include adapted PE services or occupational therapy services. It really just depends on what the student's unique needs are. And then finally, our preschool classrooms. This is the current makeup of our, our preschool classrooms. We have six inclusion sites throughout Lompoc, Santa Maria, Orca, and the San Inez Valley. 14 self-contained sites among all of those districts. Two classes, we love acronyms in special education, LEAP. We call them LEAP classrooms, and that stands for Learning, Enrichment, Autism Programs. Those are for students with autism who have the highest level of need that results from that disability. Those are not the only classrooms that serve children with autism. Most of our classrooms do, but as I said, that's, that represents the highest level of need. We have one program at Clarence Roof in Lompoc, and one at Ontiveris Elementary in Santa Maria Benita. And then finally, as part of our deaf education continuum of services, we have a preschool self-contained classroom at, in Orca at Ralph Dunlap Elementary. And I just want to close by sharing a little bit more information about our staff. We have approximately 250 staff in our division. 230 of them are instructional staff. Those instructional staff are supported by six program managers who are out and about in classrooms, supporting staff, working with families on a regular basis, a financial services manager, and a Calpads coordinator, who's our data guru and helps us with our state reporting. And then we're served by two computer technicians who support all of our technology needs throughout the division, and then 10 administrative support staff. And those administrative support staff are based here in Santa Barbara at the Santa Maria location at Farnell. We also have a satellite office in Lompoc, as well as another office in Santa Maria that serves primarily speech. And thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about our division.
You're welcome. I am so excited to now welcome Ellen Barker to the podium. Ellen has been with us at SBCO for 18 very fast years and wonderful years. Ellen was a math coordinator, amongst many other roles, but a math coordinator at the Orange County Department of Education, and that's why I remember meeting you then, because you came onboard as a mathematics coordinator here at SBCO, became director in curriculum and instruction, and now associate superintendent. Fun, fun fact that may be of no surprise to you, but still a fun fact, Ellen can recite the prologue from Chaucer's Canterbury Tales in Middle English, and she still holds the girl's record at her high school for the most push-ups, 98 in three minutes. I love it. Yes. So strong and brilliant, Ellen Barker.
How do you take me seriously after that?
Yes.
So our Curriculum and Instruction Division has just about 30 people, and we are a strong and mighty group. And what you won't hear is how we're broken up into departments because our work is ever-changing. So someone who might be doing this one year is doing that another year. We also get our funding through a variety of sources, including grants and allocations. And so some of that will also make sense as I go through the major things that we do. So one of the most important roles that we play is supporting educators' careers and their career pathways, and this is the educators in all of our districts and our schools, and even our own SBCO programs, through professional learning and lifelong progressive growth and development. And we do that in, oops, we do that in three ways: through credential programs and authorizations, through professional learning, and through grants and recognition. So when we talk about credential programs, we serve approximately 500 educators each year through our fully accredited programs, and those are all accredited by the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, or you'll hear CTC. So it starts with our newest teachers who come to us right when they start teaching in the Teacher Induction Program, which is a two-year mentor-based induction program where we serve the teachers and their mentors, and they develop cycles of inquiry and growth, and develop their dispositions through the standards for the teaching profession. Many of those teachers and teacher leaders, and then mentors, go on and join our Preliminary Administrative Services Credential Program, which we call PASC. That is an optional program, basically for people who decide they want to become educational leaders or administrators. That is done on the weekends throughout a year, and is very intensive. Then, once a person becomes an administrator, within their first administrative leadership job, they are enrolled in our Clear Administrative Services Credential Program, or CASC, which is also a two-year induction program where they have a mentor, and they work through learning the job of becoming an educational leader. We are one of a few county offices that has the preliminary program, whereas most county offices do provide the Clear Administrative Credential Program. And we are the first county office to become accredited for a bilingual authorization program for in-service teachers that allows teachers to teach in a dual-language program. In addition, those last two bullets there are authorizations that educators can get to their credential. One is the Reading and Literacy Added Authorization, and the other is to become a Transitional Kindergarten or TK teacher. And while we don't offer those accredited programs, we do manage grants that allow teachers to get those through, and we work in partnership with our districts. So those are our credential programs. In addition, we also offer quite a bit of professional learning, and our high-quality, research-affirmed, engaging, relevant professional learning is truly across all subject areas and all elements of the instructional practice and whole child programs. So not only math, science, reading, literacy, arts, but also in areas such as multi-tiered systems of support and intervention through social-emotional learning, everything that really has to do with the instructional and the cultural parts of an instructional program for our schools and our districts. And we do that through a variety of means. We offer trainings and workshops here and throughout the county, but we also do customize professional learning specifically for each of the districts, and we offer coaching, networks, and what are called communities of practice in those different areas that cut across different subject areas. And we serve teachers, we serve administrators, and we serve paraprofessionals. Then finally, our Grants and Recognition Program, as part of that whole career support and development, we honor initiative, impact, and innovation with more than 90 grants to educators, and through awards and our recognition programs, to really not only honor individual educators, but really to celebrate the whole career of education. In addition to supporting individuals' career pathways and that lifelong growth and learning, we also support whole systems. And over the past decade, California has changed its accountability system in ways that have come to rely so deeply and so heavily on our county office. And so what that has meant for our CNI Division is that it has expanded over the past decade to do this work. We are involved in this whole system's support and continuous improvement through our accountability system that has those four parts there. And I'll be sharing more about the details of how we provide continuous improvement and whole system support through our accountability system each year in June, as I share the LCAP and Differentiated Assistance Report. But just to make that, make it all kind of connect is, the three areas that you'll see are the LCAP, the Local Control and Accountability Plans, that each of our districts and charters have to write, and so we help in the development for all of them, and the review and approval for district LCAPs. We also do a significant amount of data and accountability support, not only with the data systems, with the data that comes out, but also with helping our districts organize their data. And, oops, keep hitting the wrong green button. And then finally, differentiated assistance, which happens at a universal level, and increasing levels of intensity for our districts. So we support individual teachers and educators, we support whole systems, and we, in the Curriculum and Instruction Division, play an important role in our statewide systems by providing two-way connection and advocacy between researchers and our practitioners in all of our districts and charters, between legislators and the people who have to implement them. So there's a lot of work between legislation and implementation of whether it's laws, or programs, or initiatives. And we also provide that two-way connection and advocacy between policy and the needs and the contexts of our unique and local school districts and charters and our own SBCO. So what that means is that my team, in addition to doing work in our county, does a lot of work at the statewide level, and takes on statewide leadership roles to ensure that the needs of our Class III county with tiny, tiny school districts, and very large school districts, with all the variety that we have here, that our need and our specific context is informing all of the practice that is happening at that site, or across our state. So is, as you see in that red box there, that is just a sample of the initiatives that have been new, or have taken on new importance in the state in just the past two or three years that my team is tasked with. So we do a lot of translation and processing of information as well, to provide it at just the right time, to just the right people, in just the right formats, so that we can move from research, legislation, and policy to meaningful implementation and actualization of all of these great ideas for the students who live in our county. And so finally, the last thing we do is probably what's most visible. All those other things are sometimes a little invisible, but we get to serve our community, not only through our districts, but also through celebrations and partnerships with so many people who care about education. So if you look in the lower right-hand corner, there's just one picture from one of our Salute to Teachers galas. We have the education celebration. We have these ways that people who really want to honor teachers and administrators and paraprofessionals can do so. We also offer a free SBCO portal of educational media and resources for families, for students, and for teachers. And we host some really fun academic student events. Author Go Round is at the end of this month in both South or North County at the end of the month, and at the beginning of February in South County. We have the Battle of the Books, and now we do it in Spanish, also the Batalla de los Libros, breakfast, Super Bowl, you know, all the good stuff. So that's also part of what helps keep us grounded in the work that we do, and help to keep the students at the center of all of this really broad policy and implementation work. And so that's a little insight into what we do into the CNI Division, and thank you for giving us a few minutes to talk about.
All right. Thank you, Ellen. So delighted to welcome Steve Torres to the podium. Steve has been with us at SBCO for four years, has extensive experience as an educator prior to coming onboard with us, started Started out as a high school math teacher, site and district administrator. Here in Santa Barbara County was the Executive Director of the Family Partnership Charter School and came on board with us as a Director in Curriculum and Instruction. It is so fun to share that Steve began wrestling when he was three years old and he continued through college as a wrestler. He was born and raised in Chicago, the only family member in his family to move away from Chicago. And we are so lucky that he did. Steve, come on up. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, and thank you for the fun introduction. Good way to set the mood. I am happy to be here to give you an overview of the Administrative Services Division. We have three departments, two that primarily serve an internal function and one that serves an external function of support to our districts. So I'll kind of start leading my way towards our School Business Advisory Services, which is our external arm to support our districts. We support our districts fiscally and with some legislated fiscal oversight that we have of the districts. And that's for our 20 school districts, including our SELPA, which is the Santa Barbara Special Education Local Plan Area. And for our charters and two community colleges, there's some selected services that we support them with as well. Sorry. We also represent our districts at some statewide meetings such as Business Administrators Steering Committee, as well as CISC, which is the Self-Inured Schools of California at their board meetings. These affiliations provide us with the opportunity to get new information directly from various state agencies that have to do with new legislation and policies. It also provides us the opportunity to advocate on behalf of our districts. And when we talk about our districts on the fiscal side and on all sides, there's various aspects of them that are different. One of those that we like to highlight when we talk about our external services, I mean, our School Business Advisory Services team, is that we have districts that are funded slightly differently. And so in 2014, the Local Control Funding Formula was established as a means to calculate the entitlement for our school districts for education. Our districts funded under LCFF, their local property taxes do not reach that LCFF level. In those cases, additional state funds are provided to bring those districts up to that level. Our community-funded districts, also known as basic aid, those districts actually receive property taxes that exceed that LCFF level. So in those situations, those districts are allowed to keep those excess property taxes. It's important to note that that does not apply to county offices of education. So we return our excess property taxes to the state. But when we talk about differences amongst our districts, you'll note that 11 out of 20 of our school districts are basic aid. And that's compared to the school districts statewide, which is around 50%. So, I mean, around 15%. So ours is above 50% and state is around 15%. And also, as far as LCFF and community-funded goes, that's our current numbers. Because that LCFF level is established, if at any point local property taxes fell below that level, then a district would receive state aid and fall into LCFF status. And conversely, if those property taxes increased at any point, they would fall into the community-funded status and retain those excess property taxes. So I kind of gave the lay of the land before I got specifically into our School Business Advisory Services Department. The different services, support and oversight that they provide to our districts include review and approval of district budgets and budget reports, as well as various aspects of their LCAPs. And they work closely, not just in the review and approval, but in the support in our districts, creating those documents throughout the year, really working hand-in-hand with our school business officials. They also have district networking and training to the district Chief Business Officials. They maintain a pretty robust website that has resources that they can go to to get help immediately, as well as, again, providing kind of that one-on-one, ongoing support with the districts. They manage the countywide Escape Financial Management System, which almost all of our districts use and is an ongoing day-to-day function. They audit district commercial warrants, as well as processing payroll and accounts payable for the districts. I'm just done to the last one. They support school districts with their board elections and helping to provide information in regards to filling board vacancies. And then we facilitate the County Committee on School District Organization when questions come up around school district boundaries, board member numbers, things like that. So that's kind of as needed, but it's ongoing and constantly being monitored. So that's our first department, School Business Advisory Services. I'll move to our biggest department, which is our Internal Services Department. It consists of Fiscal Services and Maintenance and Operations, which we call Internal Operations. So there's a reference to the budget there on the left. Our Fiscal Services Department is in charge of that almost $148 million budget. Through that, they work with our various programs to establish their program budgets, which ultimately culminate in our SBCEO budget. The day-to-day accounting, accounts payable, payroll, risk management, those are all handled within our Fiscal Services Department. Our Maintenance and Operations Department, they handle all things facilities. This is our custodial repairs, delivery services, and groundkeeping. It should be noted that our facilities also includes facilities leases, facilities purchases, something new that we're going into, and then that would include construction as well. One of the reasons why we are brought on a Facilities Director in the last couple of years here. And then we, you know, our North County Offices, not all operations for Internal Services are out of this office. We do have staff in those offices to be able to support the various programs and offices that are run up in the North County. When we talk about the budget, we wanted to highlight kind of the changes over the last several years. There's a picture of our 2017-2018 budget, which shows about a $66.5 million budget. And then you'll notice in the current year, that almost $148 million budget. So a very significant increase in funding for the county office over the last few years. There were some adjustments to the Prop 98 base, just following that 2017-18 year. There was an increase to county offices-based grant that they received, which gave a kind of a significant bump, but then we've seen this slow incline over the last few years. Our Alternative Schools or Alternative Programs Grant, which is for our Juvenile Court and Community Schools, we've seen an increase there. And then we've seen funding from the state directed more towards early childcare and education, and then some of the various programs to support the curriculum and instruction side. So while our budget has over-doubled, our staff hasn't over-doubled in that Internal Services. But it's a lot of work that's going into providing those services to our districts and ensuring that we're operating internally as best as possible. So I'll move to our third department, Information Technology Services. They are primarily internally operating, and so hardware and software support for the Escape Financial System. Again, because of the significance of that program, it's an ongoing, closely monitored system. We do help to facilitate the internet connectivity for some of our small districts through the K-12 High-Speed Network. And then internally, again, devices, emails, network support for all of our SBCEO staff and offices. Cybersecurity and data privacy, constantly maintaining, monitoring those efforts and services. System and application integration, as we continue to, you know, bring aboard more and more different programs. And then our audio and visual services and support is maintained within our ITS Department. And, you know, we're experiencing that right now. So actually, kind of a growing aspect too, especially as we talk about hybrid meetings and things like that. So that's the end of my division, and I appreciate the opportunity to share that with you today.
All right. It is now my pleasure. Come on up, Mari Gonzalez. So exciting, so exciting. Mari has been with us for 19 years already. 19 years at SBCEO, began her career as a school psychologist in Santa Barbara Unified, a coordinator of special education in Santa Barbara, and then at SBCEO, Director of Classified Human Resources here at SBCEO, and now Associate Superintendent. Fun facts about Mari, so many. One is that she lived in Mexico City and attended a university there in 1995. And I love sharing that she is a black belt in hopkido. Mari, I'm not practicing, not practicing anymore, but you could light that up, just like that, no problem. I don't know, Mari, if you remember, I was there to witness that you got that black belt that year. I was there. Alzonana was there, and I was there, and I could see then, as I see now, this fierce, focused, fabulous Mari Gonzalez. So, Mari. Did you see the flying sidekick?
I did.
Oh, my God. Well, while unconventional, you've heard a lot already today, so I want to just give permission for a stand and stretch real quick if anybody is interested. You can tell I'm in HR. Okay. So with regard to HR, we wanted to begin with just a little bit of information. The next eight slides, they're very brief. Each slide are regarding our employee population and the position locations that we have. The data is based on information that we pulled at the start of the school year, so around September. This slide represents which counties our employees live in, with an estimated 11% or 56 employees commuting from nearby Ventura and Slow Counties. For those employees who live in the Santa Barbara County, this slide represents the city and/or region where those employees live. Please note that Summerland is included in the third, that kind of looks orange. It was pink originally, but that's orange, third orange box, Carpinteria. The San Inez Valley, the second blue box, includes Solving and Buellton. And Vandenberg is included in that lompoc, the first green box there. But you can see the majority of our staff, looking at the far right, reside in the Santa Maria area. This slide refers to work locations for our employees. So here we can see that 38% or 191 of our employees are in classroom settings. In your handouts that you received today, there should be a yellow handout. It's three pages long. This handout represents our programs and offices and shows that we reside in 235 different locations throughout the county. Yes. Oh, my goodness, is right. So as you can imagine, with that, we have hundreds of different employment calendars. So that makes our county office services and administrative operations significantly complex. Payroll is quite dramatic, I will say, and somewhat challenging as compared to what you would typically see in a school district with no more than maybe a couple of dozen employment calendars at most. With regard to the types of positions we have in our organization, it can really be broken up into two main groups. Certificated are employees who hold a credential or certificate from the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. And classified employees do not hold a certificate or credentials. They may have licensure or other forms of certification, and they often work in classrooms, offices, and a variety of other settings. The majority of our employees, an estimated 65%, are classified employees. We can also differentiate between management and non-management, as shown here, with an estimated 85% of employees working in non-management positions. This slide represents the reported ethnicity of our employees. The pie chart on the left shows management employees with the two largest groups at 60.8% of managers identifying as white and 31.1% identifying as Hispanic. Additional ethnic groups are outlined in the key on the bottom-left side there. And then in the pie chart on the right, this is representative of non-managers. You can see that 40.6% of our non-management staff identify as white and 45.5% as Hispanic. Just for purposes of comparison, I thought I would provide you with the 23-24 eddata regarding student ethnicity in Santa Barbara County. It currently shows 73% of students reporting as Hispanic and 20% as white, and then a variety of other ethnic groups at smaller percentages as well. Our last demographic slide highlights the gender and age of our employees. On the left side, you can see that we have primarily a female workforce at 76%. And on the right side, you can see that the largest group, kind of in that bright blue color, age 50 to 59 years old, is 127 employees or 25% of our workforce. An important factor for us to consider is, given the data on age overall, a total of 208 or 41% of our employees are eligible for retirement currently. So that I'm defining as 50 or older. Many people don't retire at the age of 50, and they wait typically more towards 60, 62, somewhere around there. But that's something we need to heavily think about and consider in the decade to come, what that's going to look like, succession planning, all of that, recruitment, et cetera. Yes. Okay. So that's the end of demographic information. Now I want to take a moment to describe the main functions of our Human Resources Department. Much of what we do in HR is sensitive, sometimes legal, and often confidential. So you may never hear me talk about those things. But in general, I can say that HR consists of two major umbrellas of support. The first includes services we provide for our internal programs. And so on behalf of all SBCEO employees, our services include, but are definitely not limited, to hiring, staffing, tracking employment requirements and other areas of compliance, employee engagement and support, labor relations, professional development, many, many different things that we provide to employees. Our Benefits Department also falls under Human Resources, and that includes management of the Health and Welfare Systems of Support. Thank you, Susan. Take your time. It's okay. It's a nice soothing sound. We'll just take it in. That's very strange. So Health and Welfare Systems of Support, voluntary support plans such as life and disability insurance and other value-added employee benefits, of which there are many, such as the Employee Assistance Program, which provides counseling to staff as needed. We are members of the Santa Barbara Coastal Housing Partnership. We also have a LinkedIn Learning account, so a lot of things that we provide as additional supports. I'm still in the first, the third bullet there, Credentials Department. We also operate a Credential Services Program in which support is provided both internally and externally to all certificated employees throughout Santa Barbara County. This program includes support as to really how to navigate, and Tom is in the far right of that picture, he's the Credentials Manager, how to navigate the complexities of the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. It's not always easy to do, so he provides a lot of support in that regard. In your, you may have noticed in your monthly consent agenda each month, you have a list of all of the registered credentials for that month. And you also get a list of temporary county certificates that we are requesting approval for. Those allow people to work and be paid as a certificated employee while their applications with CTC are being processed. So that is a function of So that is a function of the board here as well. In the 2324 fiscal year, the county board authorized approximately 100 temporary county certificates. Also, under our credential services program, we apply for and oversee countywide grant opportunities that provide financial support for individuals obtaining credentials. During the 2324 fiscal year, 14 classified employees from SBCEO districts and charters in Santa Barbara County received funding to support their work toward a teaching credential. That was from our classified credentialing grant. Half of those individuals were issued preliminary credentials by June 30th of '24. Also in that same year, 48 students in the UCSB Teacher Education Program had their credential program fully funded with our teacher residency grant monies and they received a living stipend, which I'm very proud of, from that grant as well, since it's not always easy to reside in this area. Forty-five of those 48 students completed their credential by June 30th as well. Okay, now we are finally at the bottom bullets there, statewide HR network. I currently serve as the legislative liaison for the human resources leaders of all 58 county offices of education. Susan mentioned the group California County Superintendent, so that's on behalf of that group. I also participate in a small group of statewide legislative advocates that is comprised of individuals from different organizations like AXA, SSC, CASBO, and then some of the larger school districts that actually hire legislative advocates solely, so Kern, Laco, Riverside. And my role in that group is also as a representative of the California County Superintendents. In addition to our participation in the statewide group, I also lead a countywide human resources network for local school districts and that, and charter schools. And that gives us an opportunity to really just talk shop about human resources, to share about new legislation that has come through, to interpret that legislation and to provide support for how to implement those changes as well. And that seems to have grown dramatically in the last, I would guess, seven or eight years. We've had huge changes in that regard. And then finally, on a daily basis, our entire team in HR, we're about 14 people right now. We provide support to all of our local school districts anytime they have any questions, charters as well, preschools as well, related to human resources. So, that's it for that slide. I have one more slide for you. Any questions so far? I know I'm going fast. I was given seven minutes, six minutes. Okay, this is our, my last slide. Specifically focused on our classified employee service. In California, there are 92 local education agencies that are considered merit system districts. In Santa Barbara County, there are two. SBCEO is one of them and the other one is Lompoc Unified School District. The merit system is defined by very particular, its own California education code, so we have a different set of rules. And those are intended to ensure that classified employees are selected, retained and promoted on the basis of merit and fitness. Our Personnel Commission is the impartial body that adopts, implements and interprets those rules and they hear appeals as well on aspects of employment under their authority. Our commission consists of three commissioners. They are appointed for three-year terms, shown from left to right in the photos there. On the left, we have Mike Ostini, who was appointed by the exclusive bargaining unit CSEA. In the middle is Gary Pickovit, appointed by you, the county board. And the third commissioner, Carmen Jaramillo, is appointed by the other two commissioners. So we are extremely appreciative of their support. They all come with exceptional knowledge and are really dedicated to excellence in education and fairness for our employees. So I wanted to give you one last piece of data, which is, I think, good, a good representation of the magnitude of work that our staff who serve on behalf of the Personnel Commission, we have three individuals. Amy Ramos, who's here in the back, she's our Director of HR. And we have two additional staff who provide support specifically for the commission. And in the 2324 school year, they processed 1,235 classified employee applications. So that's it for me. Thank you so much. All right, well, we have one last department to share with you. I want to thank the board for, it's, it's hard to sit and get, you know, information. We couldn't, we thought about the design, we thought if we, if we have one department or division per month, it would be September by the time we, we get to the seventh. So thank you for allowing us, again, the space and time to present today. So finally, we get to, I get to invite our, my colleague, Director of Communications and Public Information Officer Kami Barnwell to the podium. Kami's been with us here at SBCEO for three years. And prior to SBCEO, she served as the Chief of Communications and PIO at the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And prior to that, spent most of her professional life as a reporter covering local schools here in Santa Barbara County. In fact, had worked closely with Bill Saroni in his office, reporting on local schools as well. Also reported on government and many, many fascinating topics. Fun facts, boy, so many for all, really, truly. I think it's super fun that Kami actually lived in Spain for several years. She was working for a news agency covering Spanish nightlife, cuisine, culture and film. And every year for the past 10 years, she's written the cover story for the Santa Barbara Independent Fiesta Edition. And this past year, Fiesta turned 100 years old and what Kami wrote was truly spectacular. And with that, I'd like to welcome and thank Kami Barnwell.
Thank you so much. I want to come up with a fun fact about Susan. Because we, there's a lot of them out there. Yeah, I'm glad that you mentioned, when I first came to town as a reporter 35 years ago, I used to work with and interview the woman who held my, holds, held the job that I hold now. And she was my point of contact for so many conversations and so many things. I wasn't always quoting her, I would call her and just say, can we talk? Can, I, I need help, can you help explain this to me? So here I am today in that role and it's, it's pretty magical, honestly. So first slide. I only have two slides and I'm going to go really fast because I know how long we have been sitting and also time to get on that tour so we can show you around a bit. But I wanted to start by introducing my amazing team. Delaney Patrick, Isabel Guerrero, Luis Medina and the print shop team, Steve and Matt, who you may or may not see when we go on that tour later. They're absolutely fantastic and they're helping put on this meeting right now too. So we work behind the scenes to help support board meetings. But I will dive in by just framing for you really briefly the, the key objectives or maybe the purpose of what the communications department is here to do. We work to increase public engagement and awareness around all of these programs and initiatives and services and achievements and impacts that you've been hearing about this entire presentation. We work to build trust and understanding of the work of public education in general. And really are very focused on the relationships and connections with all of the different audiences that we need to tend to internally, externally. And who, those audience, in my mind, it's everyone because it's anyone who cares about children, schools, families. So pretty much everyone in the community, doesn't even matter if they don't have kids in the school currently, they care about communities. So we tend to those audiences very carefully. We advocate for and aspire to create content and messaging that is clear, consistent, timely, relevant, easy to access and understand. And that could be an internal message on something that's happening here at SBCEO, we need to get out to the staff. Or something maybe more impactful that's going out to the entire community during a crisis. The goal, the goal is to deliver the right information at the right time to the right people. And there is a certain order that that needs to happen in. Trust me, you can get yourself into some trouble if you don't remember all of those people who need to know what by when. So I'm at the table trying to say, did we remember to tell this person, should we talk to this group? Because it will come back and, and people, they'll forgive a mistake, but they won't forget being locked out or blocked out. So we're really careful about that. As the Public Information Officer for the Santa Barbara County Education Office, I manage the Public Information Office and that's a very different hat that you put on. So you're no longer thinking about cool graphics for social media or click rates on the website. You're kind of moving into a different mode and the responsibility goes up with that, I take it very seriously. Having been on the other side of it as a journalist, trying to get information. So I, I take that role very seriously and I, I really love it. So we manage very time-consuming, often complex Public Records Act requests. We handle inquiries from the public, addressing a wide range of questions and concerns. Could do a whole presentation on, when you have the same requests and concern coming forward multiple times, maybe we're not doing a good enough job in getting the word out about something. But there's also a lot of one-offs and time spent to just care for people who are going through something and they have a concern that they, they need information. We manage media relationships and look to build trust and awareness and accuracy there. So I got myself into some trouble at a forum I was at where I raised my hand and I had all these colleagues, former colleagues of mine who are reporters. And I said something about how sometimes we have to hold them accountable. And they said, no, we hold you guys accountable. And I said, sometimes we hold you accountable. And it was all very friendly, but it's true. Yeah, we have to track and, and, and pay attention to those relationships. When emergencies impact schools or our own operations, you take a big, deep breath. We might be leading or coordinating, troubleshooting, strategizing, supporting in whatever way we can with whatever is needed. It could be just having a colleague that you know that knows somebody at the Red Cross who can come in and help, to maybe even helping craft messages that go out very often, actually. So sometimes I'm tapping my friends in different agencies, I'm working with the media to set the record straight on something. Or maybe even behind the scenes with the superintendent or a school leader who's dealing with something delicate or potentially, I won't say politically sensitive, but sometimes. So you, you, you're behind the scenes helping support that and, and I really enjoy that role. When a regional crisis hits, like a major weather event or threats of acts of violence is what we're, we're calling it. So sometimes it's an act of violence, sometimes it's just a threat, we don't always know what we're dealing with. It's not an exaggeration to say that I clear my desk and I devote myself fully to that until we have an understanding of the situation, rain or shine, day or night, in service to families and schools. Not unlike being a reporter, but in a very different capacity. So that, that's something that I take very seriously as well. So a question would be like, how, I, I've listed some of the aspirations and the, our goals and how we work and how we function here at SBCEO, but I'm wondering if you're wondering like, well, how do you, how do we achieve these things? So the best way I could think to do that in the limited amount of time was to just share a couple of highlights from the scope of the work that my team and I are doing in partnership with Superintendent Salsedo and the departments. So this is going to be fast. In this past year, we produced SBCEO's first annual report to the community. This is an encapsulation of not just what we do, but what impact we're having. And all the major, I'd say, education-related themes that have surfaced over the years, interesting spotlights, celebrating the amazing work of our teams and just keeping people in connection to the work of SBCEO and public education in general. We manage our SBCEO website. And I'll throw a little bit of data at you, we could do a deeper dive another day, but we have about 68,000 users. And that's an increase from 2023 of about almost 4%. We generate two regular newsletters and, you know, our, our audiences have come to really appreciate and count on these newsletters. So that's a place you want to be in. It's hard to launch something new, but once you get it going, you have to be consistent and you have to be, it has to be something that people look forward to. So I feel like we're in a good place there. Our employee newsletter, it's called the Kit, Keeping in Touch, it's been around for a long time, but this past year it won an award at the statewide level and, and that's kind of cool. That's something that, you know, I, I didn't imagine, but I guess they considered it to be pretty impressive compared to other school district and county head offices, so that was cool. And I'll just say quickly that Superintendent Salsedo's newsletter now reaches 6,000 plus people each month and has a very impressive open rate. We track things like that in my world because we want to know, does it matter if it goes out on a Thursday, should we send it after lunch? All of those, those analytics really help us. What kinds of stories do people click on? How, how much patience and time do they have? How much bandwidth do people have to sit and read? And so, you know, probably because it's Susan, she, most of them are people that she knows personally, but a lot of them are people we've just added to this newsletter, they can unsubscribe, but it's just growing and growing and about 45% open rate. And in the world of marketing, 20 to 25 would be a dream goal. So that's pretty cool. We manage, like I said before, media and public relationships, but I wanted to say something about, you know, press releases. We're constantly thinking about, is it a press release, is it a media pitch, is it a personal phone call? Is it, you know, we throw, why, cast a wide net and see what sticks. Really keeping track of what's getting covered and what's not getting covered and why. And then another part of that, when I said media relations, public relations, the traditional PR where you're, you're really staying abreast of who are the influencers? Who are the, the leaders, the champions, the, maybe the detractors? These are all people I care about and I want to know them by name so that when we have something happening, we can connect and help them, help get the word out about something. So we'll, real quickly, you, you probably all know, we have social media here. We added Instagram a year or two ago now and have 27,000 users on Instagram, 60,000 on Facebook and 23,054 on LinkedIn in the last 12 months. So there's different ways to slice and dice that, I gave you the annual. We support our departments with big events when, and these aren't my words, someone else said, when you need the comms pixie dust, magic creative pixie dust. And so they bring us in, sometimes in the beginning, sometimes at the end, but all the many events that our departments lead. And sometimes we lead with superintendent's office or another office where we're starting something from scratch. But it could be everything from designing a whole branding around an event to just being there to cover it, make sure the media is there, talk it up so that they understand what it's about and everything in between. But one highlight is the Workforce Housing Summit that we hosted here, which was a totally unique event. And I had the honor of getting to work on that from beginning to end and really watch our community of educators come in, imagine what would it take to build housing on our district land for our employees? Talk about recruitment tool, right? And, and then lastly, this is my last point, you know, we, we work on a lot of different kinds of campaigns. So we're communicators, right? So we know how to get the word out, but it's, it's more complicated than it sounds. We're competing with people's very busy, you know, scrolls and bandwidth that they have. So how do you connect with people when you really need to? Well, I'll, I'll give you one example, it's up on the screen there, the Join the Journey campaign, we did bring to the board. I think it's been since earlier in the fall. It's an ongoing campaign that you can now actually see a spotlight of it up at the Santa Barbara Airport. It was picked up by media, it's all over the public access TV, I've had a couple of people say that they've seen it. So what this is, it's, these are video vignettes. It's produced entirely in-house by my team and I, video vignettes on interesting faces of public education across our county. Not necessarily just SBCEO employees, it's district employees, people who are doing these incredible roles that help sustain public education. And they're the people who like what they do, so they talk about it in that way and kind of invite people, hey, join this journey, it's a great place to land. So that's one example of a campaign and I'm really proud of that one. So stay tuned and help me share it when you, when you go back into your communities, if you see it or if you see it on social media, please help us reshare it. And I'll close just by saying that, you know, the role of a communications office in public education, it's way more than just sharing news and information or making way more than just sharing news and information or making sure that our installations like this are curated or that we have the right, you know, date on the or the right logo on a flyer. Those things all matter very much, but for me, very deeply, it's about believing in the purpose of public education, the heart and purpose of it and finding every possible way we can to elevate it. So that's that's my honor to to try to strive to do that. And I get to work with a great team of people here. So thank you.
Really nice way to to end it, Kami. I want to say thank you for, thank you to the board, to the team members of my executive cabinet to that presented today. I also want to make sure that I introduce Nicole Evanson, also part of our cabinet team. Amy Ramos, part of our cabinet team, who happened to see Join the Journey when she was at the airport over the winter holiday. We connected. Um, you already know Mark Cunningham, who's our director of facilities and um, not part of our cabinet team, but part of very integral part of our our staff. Um, Donald Lockwood, as you know, part of Steve's team in AV. Um, the reason why we did the, we presented today in the five divisions, you saw on the org chart and communications is not part of a division, but rather reports um, directly and works directly with me. And so that's why we broke it out into the five divisions plus communications today. I looks like we took, maybe, did I do that? Can you maybe one more time? Thank you. That would be great. Oh, perfect. I wanted to um, hand this back over to our Chair, uh, Madam Chair Cardy um, with thanks. And you may want to choose to ask the board um, to consider any of these three prompts in processing what you've heard today or not. You might want to rather take a recess. It's completely your call. But maybe something that validated your thinking could be something, something new that you learned today or something that you're curious to know more about. So with that, I want to say again, thank you. Thank you so much. And we're here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to this stellar cabinet. Um, and I've known you all for some time now, and I'm still amazed. I'm amazed at your dedication to the job. This is one of the the most incredibly well-run operations, I think, organizationally speaking across the board. Um, and we we owe it all to our fantastic leader and her ability to really cultivate the best in people. So uh, with that, do we have any comments from our board members?
Excuse me, should have been more prepared for that. Uh, I really appreciated the introduction to all the departments. Um, I do have some questions written down, but I bet if I read back through some stuff, I'm going to answer a lot of them. Um, so I'll most likely reach out if I have any questions, but I do really appreciate the clarity. Uh, and I was very impressed with the presentation, even with the short it was. So I wanted to thank you.
I wish we would have had this six years ago. It would have made my life so much easier first coming on the board, trying to figure this all out. Bless Anna's heart. She got me the first org chart with pictures on it so that I could put faces and names together when you only meet every month and you're all wearing different clothes all the time. It was really hard to figure out who was who. Um, and I I think it's a great way to start um a new year when we have a new board. I think it's very good. Thank you.
Um, yes, I just would like to iterate um, comments about just being really grateful for the presentation. It was great and um, I am always just inspired by the work that the organization does, the leadership, um, the dedication and that how it's guided by the values that, you know. Um, so just thank you again. I did have one little question. I had a couple of questions um, too, that I may come back to um, with the different departments, but is there much overlap that you guys find with the different departments? And I don't know, like, I don't want you guys all to rush up the podium. But um, be and maybe
I'd love to address that in terms of overlap. Thank you so much for your question. Uh, you know what's distracting me though, before I I talk I answer the question is that I didn't introduce a very important part of the Executive Cabinet Team, Anna Friedland. And so we couldn't function with as a an executive cabinet without Anna, without you. So sorry, I didn't include you while I was introducing, but I just wanted to savor the moment and introduce you here. All right. And with that overlap, you know, I will say that I think I see more and more overlap as we continue on in in the years, actually. Um, so so for example, um, one that's very easy to say is human resources touches every every part of our organization. I will say that Steve's um, Division in Administrative Services, especially the internal um, supports touches every department. But and special education is um, you know, uh, collaborating even more with Bridges Student and Community Services and will get support from curriculum and instruction. Curriculum and instruction and um, school business administrative advisory services work together for LCAP reviews, Local Control Accountability Plan reviews. So I could go on with more communications overlaps every all divisions, departments. So I I could go on with the examples, but I will say that over for sure, in the last three, four, five years, much, much more collaborative work amongst the divisions. And perhaps ten years in prior, it was a little bit more division by division and now much more overlap there. So those are some of the examples. Anything burning as far as an example that anyone on a team would like to share? Okay, so those were those were a few. Okay, those were a few. You're welcome. What else?
It's interesting when you've been in education a long time, you kind of see uh, what was in the past and how it's blended into a much better model in our future, especially if we're still around. Uh, and and in doing that, you validate some of the things that are in your representing area. Because I kept thinking, oh, yeah, I I do remember that. And yes, we do have that because I don't really think about it separately. I'm up here and we are a team, but yet when something is modeled and spoken about, I realize how it is affecting the area students, the individual professional development that's going on with those new teachers. The budget that is going on, and sometimes I go and sit at our board meetings and see what's going on and it's it's a validation. Ellen, I remember you from way back when. And it's so good to see all of that energy and all of that, you know, knowledge still filtering through. I didn't think I'd be here, but here I am. And that validation and curiosity now that I think I even will put more attention to as we move through the other layers that we still have tremendous work to do. So thank you all. I I just was very, very interested in every single thing you said. So thank you again.
Yeah, I won't. I won't say a ton, but I think um, the something I learned, I learned so much. There is not one thing. Um, what's really nice is having the opportunity to hang out with some of you on that Friday before the holidays. And it put it so in perspective to me because I was like, so who are in these rooms? Who are these employees? Like I, it was just so big to me. And then when we're looking at spaces, I'm like, so who will go in these spaces? And I just have such a much more clear picture of the staff, like what we're looking for going forward in terms of the space for for the staff. Um, I sit on the executive team for Division at UCSB, our Student Affairs Division. And um, so I have that lens and and then just I was imagining your meetings. And so that was that was just really nice to see. And I thought about the overlap a lot. And I'm really glad to hear that you really do uh, collaborate. I I thought about even like trainings, you know, with HR and certi- certifications and all of that stuff. So my my mind is blown and I'm digesting and I'll have more nuanced questions going forward, but you gave me such a great foundation and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
So just to wrap it up, thank you again for your presentations. And now you are all armed with information to answer that question. What do you do at county ed? So we appreciate the context and these great visual aids too. So thank you for all of it. Um, this brings us to our superintendent's report, Susan.
Well, thank you very much. I will say um, happy school board recognition month. So thank you for all that you do. Yes, thank you for all that you do. And I say that um, without any platitude behind me at all or thought around that, but rather a true gratitude. Um, because when we are all centered around students and we have those shared values, man, can we get great things done? So we really appreciate you and all the school board trustees in Santa Barbara County and throughout the state. So means a lot. Tomorrow, we should be here changing subjects. Tomorrow, we should be hearing proposed budget. It'll come out more tomorrow. It's a little bit better than what we had predicted earlier. So more information to come. In the report, you'll see that there is um, on page two, January twenty-fourth, Capital Advisors. It's a group that we um, we contract with. And they will have some principals of Capital Advisors come um, on the twenty-fourth here in the auditorium at two o'clock in person to go through the governor's proposed budget. There's also opportunity to see this online. They have online free events as well on their website. Um, just a couple of asterisks I want to point out. I know you've read through this, but I wanted to say on page three on the top, the Inclusion Network um, facilitated, hosted and thought thought about by the Curriculum Instruction Division in partnership with our uh, local uh, special education area, uh, local and special education support. Inclusion Network is something that is um, taking off in the state and being modeled after what has been created here in Santa Barbara County. It's tremendous work. We have so many districts who are part of this network. I think this is our, is there a third year now or second, Ellen? Second. Ah, yes, yes, yes. So paused and now come back, came back. But it's just truly a a model and um, Ellen and her team um, are continue to be invited throughout the state to present on how how did you do that? What does it look like? Um, because, you know, we're really wanting to ensure that all students are being served. We're not separating special education off over there. It's really about including and thinking about how we serve our students all together. Um, the sec- the next little asterisk on the statewide mathematics convening, true, incredible, heavy lifting statewide convening, they um, led by curriculum instruction in our team um, in the state. So exciting work that's happening there, which with this huge shouldering of responsibility. Um, on the next page, I wish I could highlight all, but I just want to just lift up a couple of things on um, in Student and Community Services Division. Um, you heard about career technical education as one of the big focus areas. We just learned recently that um, our office, which had written for a grant, has now received the grant. This is a one point four eight million dollar bonus of those funding. I'm gonna check with, I'm gonna look with Bridget. Um, but most of that funding is pass-through funding to districts. In other words, we receive the funding, we provide it to the districts to support career technical education. Um, so that's there. And then Partners in Education. So everything on here is really important, but Partners in Education, award-winning by the California School Awards Association for their um, for their work. So I'll 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 stop there, ask if there are any questions on the superintendent's report. All right, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan. This monthly feature in this agenda is really worth poring over because it does give updates by division and and shares a lot of really good news and some opportunities to for further learning. Uh, the next item is our consent agenda. And we're going to hear a motion on all three of these items, as we will each month, the the minutes from December thirteenth meeting. And as Mari had uh, indicated, the registration of credentials and other certification documents and the issuance of temporary county certificates and the Declaration of Surplus. So do I have a motion to approve all three consent agenda items? And second with Nadia? All in favor?
Hi.
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 That was a little weak, huh? We're a little off here. Voices are kind of cracking.
I think we're all dealing with a little post-holiday um re- recuperation here.
Mine's button coordination.
Okay, item number thirteen is a change order, and I think Mark Cunningham flagged that it might be likely that we would see this. And here it is. Do you want to give us a little further color on that so that we'll have a better understanding what we're voting for?
They add up to, there's five on this one, um, adding up to about twenty thousand dollars. There are small different areas of unforeseen's and uh, just a few things to push the project along and keep it on um, on on schedule. But uh, but yes, I just requesting approval for this item. If you guys uh, see anything on the list you'd like to ask specifically, I'd be happy to answer.
Any further questions for Mark? No?
I just have one quick question. Do you foresee future change orders after this one?
Yes, I I did prepare. I didn't include it in the packet. I do have a change order log. I'm tracking about another fifteen thousand to wrap this up. So that puts us somewhere around seventy, seventy-five for the total. Being that though, the largest sum was the abatement that really had been intended to be included in the plan documents at bedtime. And that took up a a large thirty-four thousand dollars of that estimated seventy-five to get us done. So respectively, we're really around forty, forty-five, about ten percent of the full budget of the project. I I think it was bid at four hundred and sixty-three thousand, so forty-six would be about ten percent. I am anticipating that to get us out of this project complete, finished and done. So that's about where we're landing. And and I can provide that COP log if anyone would like it. So.
Thank you. More importantly, you're you're tracking it, but yes.
I am. I am tracking it. I'm I'm fully tracking it. I I uh, we're getting very close now. Most of the project is towards the final stages. I I we're not opening up any more items, so I know what the unforeseen's are and what has been captured. So I I have a pretty good estimate to get us to the finish line to get us closed out. And we're aiming for the end of February. This change order does add about six, seven days to the schedule, but that only pushes up to February twenty eighth. So that's their uh, contractual end time. And we're and we're and we're on target.
That's great. Um, may I get a a motion to approve change order number two? And Sarah's a second. And all in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
That motion carries. The next two items are for information purposes only, the Personnel Report, which is attached, and then the Williams Uniform Complaints Quarterly Report, which I think we we kind of talked about last time. Any questions on either one of those? No? Okay. Well, now we're going to move into a closed session, so we will excuse those of you not directly involved in this part. And thank you very much for your participation. Okay, we are reconvened to open session. And we have one action item in front of us, uh, which is regarding the recommended adoption of resolution, ratification of the purchase of real property. And um, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that in lieu of our discussion and the information that was brought forward, we deny the recommendation to ratify.
Thank you, Mrs. Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Flores. Um, and roll call vote.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Alvarez Flores. Dr. Armistead?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Ms. Erman?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And Mr. Walker is absent, so that motion passed.
Thank you. This item is about future agenda items. So if there's anything that you heard today that sparked your curiosity about another uh, um, department or division or program or practice, um, or if there's any other items, please bring them forward and we'll include them on subsequent agendas.
Is there any um, worthwhile update on the juvenile hall in Santa Maria?
Glad to bring that forward at a future board meeting to give you an update on the construction and facilities and and shifts at the Juvenile Court Community Schools. Thank you.
I I was very alarmed to find out that one of the young gentlemen that was involved I, I was very alarmed to find out that one of the young gentlemen that was involved in a recent. Homicide in Santa Maria went to. Hall directly. And I just, I, yeah, yeah.
And to that, I would suggest a presentation on our youth mental health services, if we could update our board on that.
Mental health services. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn to tour the county ed office, do I have a, a motion to adjourn to the next meeting on February 13?
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right.